We're gonna ask him.
We'll get started. Emel, do you want to call the role, please?
Everyone should be here.
Jim Davison will be late. He will see a role.
I see we have a new member.
Yes, we do. Do we have more identities? She's a junior. She's our new student rep. She'll get a chance to talk a little bit later. Well, why don't we go around and introduce ourselves to Mariah? You can start, please.
I'm Olivia.
I'm Heath Miller. I'm from Newburgh.
I'm Kim Clark. I'm from Winterport.
I'm John Conchell. I'm from Winterport.
Eric Carter. I'm from Frankfort.
Cindy Mitchell from Hampden.
Emel Genes, Assistant Superintendent.
Mariah and I met yesterday, so welcome, Mariah.
I'm Kelly Bickmore from Newburgh.
Niles Parker from Hampden.
Lance Elhosh from Winterport.
I'm Amy Fairclock from Hampden.
Martha Harris from Winterport.
Rick Moore from Hampden.
And Amanda Seidel from Hampden.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome.
A little bit before we leave, we'll need a volunteer to mentor our new members. If someone hasn't done that in a while and would be interested in helping a student, could let us, you know, let us know. It'd be great. Next is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 3rd, 2014.
Removed?
Seconded. Removed and seconded. Are there any questions or discussions about the minutes? Being none, all those in favor? I'm Tina Anas. Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
We have one. It'll be in your blue envelope this evening. We have an additional coach nomination as well.
This is the portion of the meeting designed for those in the audience who'd like to address the board. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board this evening that's not already on the agenda?
We would love to. Is this where we go?
No, just a couple of minutes.
Okay.
All right, great. So that is then brings to my report. And there's a couple of things I wanted to talk about. One is the annual retreat. Do we have a date for the survey?
It looks like the majority of people have selected either September 30th and October 1, or October 1 and October 2. So what's the preference of the board?
I'm not here for any of those. On October 2nd, there's McGraw's Book Fair in open house.
Okay. So it's the desire. I think on all the lists, we had at least four people that could not make it on all four options.
It's a Tuesday, Wednesday, or a Wednesday, Thursday?
It's a Tuesday, Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Yep, Tuesday, Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Isn't Wednesday also our board meeting?
Yes. October 1 is the regular scheduled board meeting, so we synchronize it with that. So either we meet the night before than the board meeting, or the board meeting the following night.
Okay, we have one, Wednesday, Thursday. That works for me. Does that work for?
I need a little heavily more for Wednesday, Thursday, although I'm relatively in the room.
All right, let's try for Wednesday, Thursday, and if anyone can't make it, please let the superintendent know, and if we have to change it, we'll search for an alternative date.
What time would that be, Thursday?
We usually start at 7:00, unless you want to start earlier.
No.
I'm assuming both nights, we go like 7:00 to 9:00.
About.
So October 1 and October 2.
Thank you. I did want to know, last time we met, we had a member of the public leave a letter with us. I wanted to let the board know that the desire in that letter was to meet with us as a board in executive session. That's not going to happen for a couple of reasons. That person is not an employee, and so is not entitled to that meeting with us in executive session. And also, there is legal ramifications pending, and so we've been advised by our attorneys to not enter into any kind of side conversation or any conversation with that because it now needs to be handled in the legal realm. Just wanted to let folks know that, because I know they might be getting questions in the community about that. And then, just a reminder, that tomorrow night is the candidate forum at UTC. And if you can come to that, that would be great. I think there's about 40 people confirmed from the Piscataquis region. Piscataquis, pronounced "scary" in the country. And I think 18 candidates for office. Great, so that's what I have.
Okay, under resignations, I have none to report. We do have three nominations. So if you reference your agenda notes, the first nomination is boys' basketball coach at Reed's Brook. My nomination is Chad Bradbury. Chad has been a coach in our system for nine years, most recently as the girls' varsity basketball coach at Hampden Academy. Also extensive coaching in AAU, a stipend $3,088. Annie Smith Taylor, cheering coach at Reed's Brook. Again, coaching experience at AJ, $1885 stipend. And the one in your blue pack is the supplement. That is Jonathan Solomon, Assistant Varsity Football Coach at Hampden Academy. You can see the background. Jonathan with a stipend of $3,643.
Do we like to take those as a slate?
Removed and we hope that it's a slate.
I second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we support the nominations as presented by the superintendent. Are there any questions? Cindy?
The amount of years of experience is a huge difference in stipends here. Is it a deeper deal to do the basketball, but it is coaching? Is it a little more of a time commitment?
It is, it's time, greater responsibility, et cetera. Those stipends are all in the teaching negotiated contract. We call them ERPs, Established Relative Position. But it goes on responsibility stipend, I mean, time, et cetera.
Okay, that's what I wondered, because.
There's a formula for that, yeah. And actually, that's a good question, because we do, is Regan the oni- yeah, is Regan here? Yeah, in fact, Regan is involved in the stipend review committee on an annual basis. We do review various stipends with co-curricular and extracurricular.
So I'm sorry, based on the number of hours.
Number of hours, number of participants, time commitment, length of season, et cetera.
Are there any other questions or discussions? Ben Paul is in favor? I'm not seeing any of this. I'd like to focus here.
I know they're not. And that's all we had on the nominations and transfers, so we go to the reading, essential behaviors and outcomes, is Niles.
Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who can meet the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our communities share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves. Our schools are community support systems and should welcome and encourage all members of our communities to participate. And our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members.
Thank you, Niles. We have Andrea Lee, faculty member in the area of Forsyth's location in RSU 22, and she has three athletes that she'd like to introduce us to tonight. Mrs. Lee?
Hi, everybody. I am honored and proud to be back to talk with you about our experiences at Nationals this summer. I have Brianna Morris, who is a Unified Athlete in Bowling. Madison Morris, who is an athlete for bowling. And Kelsey Tripp, who is an athlete for aquatics. And they're going to share their stories. And then, at the end, we have another ta-da to talk about, Kelsey. So go ahead.
Okay, I'm Brianna Morris, and I was the Unified Partner for Bowling. Well, we bowled every day, just to help. And I was her Unified Partner for Unified Doubles and Unified Teams. And we got a silver medal for Unified Doubles. And fourth place ribbon for our Unified Team. And we got to meet a lot of people from different states, and we had a really good time.
And where was the event held?
Princeton.
Princeton. It's okay, all right. Okay, every time. Maybe another girl, Mrs. Lee, maybe the next coach, Shannon.
I'm Kelsey. I did swimming every day with my team. We went to Princeton Pool for like every day and met like, I don't know how many swimmers, but it was from Nebraska, New Jersey, Hawaii, I can't remember what else, Florida. There's a bunch of fellows, but they didn't come. We, I got first place for the 50 back. First place for the 25 freestyle. Second place for 50 back. And second place for 25, 4x25 relay, which is pretty hard, because we got beat by New Jersey.
My name's Madison Morris, and. Hi. Bowled every day with my sister Brianna, who's my new partner. And we bowled at a bowling alley with baby pool means, I think.
They're not any big.
And I got bronze, um, bronze and silver and. I got silver.
That was for your Unified, right, the silver?
Silver for Unified, and bronze for single, and fourth for Team.
And what was your best score when you bowled?
What was your best like? Do you remember?
No.
You were getting up there.
When you bowled, do you bowl with the little balls or the big balls?
The big balls.
Big balls. What's that? Is that a name for those? That's not candlestick.
I think it's a regular ball.
Regular ball.
Thank you.
I worked with Madison and Brianna, and also helped Kelsey with their swimming. And on the weekends, we would go to the bowling alley and to the pool and stuff like that to work out. And these girls started off with their scores in the 30s, 40s, and 50s. And throughout their bowling career, they were scoring in the hundreds afterwards. So it was pretty impressive growth that they made. It was really exciting. I have hard words to express. I mean, I'm so honored. Miss Kelsey Tripp was selected for Team USA. Now he's got me crying.
It's in California.
You what?
It's in California.
All right.
And in one and a half weeks, I go into Indiana.
Indiana. You know where in California?
Los Angeles.
You know where in Indiana?
I actually don't know the answer to that.
But I go, I get to skip five days of school.
But you'll be learning something pretty good out there, too, right?
Well, I will be like given the, it's training camp. Well, in New Jersey, well, I was a little bit nervous, so I didn't eat that much. When I got back, I lost 10 pounds. Yeah.
So this is a really big deal. This is the World Summer Games for Special Olympics. And she is the only female in the state of Maine that is attending for, as representative of Maine. So it's pretty exciting. There's one other athlete going for golf. So the two athletes from Maine are going to be going to training camp first, and then the World Summer Games will take place in Los Angeles the last week in July, beginning of August. And it's just, it's such an honor to our students to be selected. I mean, it's just an incredible, incredible process. Again, the IOSC, the International Olympic Committee, is a governing body for the Olympics, the Power Olympics, and Special Olympics. So to be a part of Team USA, it really is a part of Team USA. So it's a really big deal. And I just, I'm so proud. I can't believe it. Good job.
One, I'm impressed by anybody that can take those bowls and balls, those big balls, and get 100 picks. I'm just amazed. You guys must work really hard. Second, I, Kelsey was at the pool when I was recovering. She was at the pool almost every time I was at the pool this winter, so I can attest to the work. So I expect to see you. You'll motivate me to go to the pool more this winter, right, Kelsey?
Yeah.
I also want to just talk about her commitment. She's at the pool every weekend or in the evenings, and in times even when she forgot her suit and had to swim in her clothes.
I did that. I dumped my clothes on.
That was?
Yeah. I needed a helper. She put some work in her footprints, and I just dumped down my clothes on.
Her commitment is, Andrea's commitment is just outstanding and inspiring and.
Yeah, I echo that. So that takes a lot of commitment and time. Thank you very much, Andrea.
Thank you. That really means a lot. I appreciate that. Brianna's got some good points. I think that she just wants to hand out.
Sure, go for it.
Andrea, what's the scope of that with respect to student athletes? How many student athletes were at the New Jersey event?
I want to say 3,000 athletes.
3,000?
Well, some of them, like, some of them stayed on time.
Team Maine had a delegation of 60, which was head of delegation, assistant head of delegation, coaches, unified partners, and athletes.
Wow.
And we had six teams: athletics, which is track and field, aquatics, bachee, bowling, golf, and basketball.
Wow.
So it's pretty exciting. And we stayed in the dorm with Team Maryland, and they had 217 athletes from Maryland.
They were loud. No, they were loud. I was like, stay on their door.
Okay, again, thank you all. Congratulations. I'm assuming we'll have a write-up in link 22?
Sure.
Okay, that'd be great for the.
And you'll come back and let us know how you did?
All right.
And I think they have something they want to pass.
This is for us to say thank you.
Okay.
You just love that sound. Yeah, it's a great sound. Thank you, Brian. Good job with your bowling.
Sounds like, sounds like cowbells.
Okay, thank you again.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Item B, we discussed in previous meetings, but I did want to distribute to you some specific information, just to highlight this at the 30,000-foot level. We currently have six charter slash virtual schools. The Baxter Academy, you can see the first one is basically a STEM school. The Cornville Regional Charter School, that's a K through 6 school. That's a school that is probably on the map most significant, because that's the one where Scout Hegan now is footing about $1 million from public funds to support that charter school. The Fiddlehead School is a K through 5 school. The Harpswell Coastal is 6 through 12. And the Maine Academy of Natural Sciences is 9 through 12. And the Maine Kexis Academy is the one that we have a student going to. That's 7 through 12. They have about 270 students. And then I also supplied you with three that are going to be coming. Martha, do these come to the state board, or do they go to the commission for the charter school? They don't go to the state board, do they?
Go to the commission.
Okay. The following three, the Acadia Academy, Inspire ME Academy, and Maine Virtual Academy, will be going to the commission next month for approval. So if those are endorsed, then next year, we'll have nine charter slash virtual schools operational, as compared to two years ago, we had zero. I also put in your packet, we currently have 43 homeschoolers. And that's an estimate, because we don't have the finite number until October 1, when we do the actual enrollment. So I'll give you a follow-up to this later. But we're guessing 43 homeschoolers, the one virtual charter school, and we also have one going to private school. So that kind of gives you the background there. Anyone have any questions on the alternative educational settings that our children, students now have the opportunity in the state of Maine to partake of? John?
Out of all the towns and all the students, only one student is going to a private school?
Yes.
Charter school.
That's right. No, private school.
No, private school.
Private school, that's correct.
There's also one going to a charter. There's, that is, to me, a surprisingly small number, based on my experience in other places I've lived.
It is.
But I think it speaks to the quality of our school.
The homeschool number is still large. It's down a little bit from previous years, but 43 students living in our four towns, homeschooling is a large number. So that's the landscape that we currently see, and we'll certainly read a lot of information on this in the upcoming months as well. Working something like that Portland initiative that we talked about last time, kind of disappeared? Yes. Mayor Brennan really came out and pushed that back significantly, and the superintendent took it off the table. Yeah, very interesting. I also want to inform you that Mary and I will be conducting public forums on our conversation pertaining to the option, the potential option to extend the school day next year. We have a public forum at Reed's Brook on October 21, and we have one on October 28 at the Widerly Middle School. Those will be publicized on our website, and also the website of all of our schools. So if you'd like to attend that, again, Mary, what time did we establish now? Was it 7 o'clock?
7 to 8.
7 to 8. So October 21 at Reed's Brook, October 28 at the Widerly School. I also want to let you know that I have received a request from a citizen for Freedom of Information Act pertaining to all salaries for district employees. So basically, as you know, that's public information, so in the next few days, we'll be sending to that citizen the salaries and the benefits paid by the district to all district employees. I just want to let you know that, because it's rather uncommon to have such a comprehensive request with respect to the salary and benefits for employees. So just be aware of that. Okay, Olivia, Mariah, what do you have to tell us tonight?
I think I'll go first if you want. Well, activities are starting up at the high school. So the mock trial team has started practices, and National Honor Society is starting to plan events. Also, the math, the math team has been preparing for their first meet, which is on October 1. Also, seniors have just been really busy, meeting with their guidance counselors and starting the application process for colleges. And next week, there are some fun homecoming games and activities for the high school. Do you have anything? Picture day. Yeah.
Was it today, Mariah?
Yeah.
How'd it go?
Pretty good. I don't think I was ready when they took my picture.
Okay. Any questions for our ladies?
Mariah, do you want to tell us a little bit more about you and your interests? What prompted you to want to join the board?
I'm on the school field hockey and tennis team. I also do key club and JCL and CISV, which is an order, which is a peace building organization. And I was prompted to join the board, because I was friends with Olivia and Keegan, who were on it, and I heard their experiences, and from what they said, it prompted my interest, and I figured, why not?
You're welcome. We're happy to have you.
Okay, Emel?
I have no report.
Questions of board members. Are there any questions this evening? Martha?
Well, I noticed that on the board calendar, there still is that prep workshop. I thought that was canceled.
Thank you, Martha. That is case.
So somebody was planning to go, cross it off?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for that reminder. Do we know why that was canceled? Was it out of interest?
That's exactly what it was.
I think what it was, we had only two school systems in prep that had, our system in 63 had a large amount of individuals going, and for some, there's a lot going on. And so we decided that probably it'd be more beneficial to do it another time.
It'll be rescheduled?
Yes.
Great, great. Any other questions?
What time is the candidate forum tomorrow? 6:30. 6:30 to 8? 30 to 8, I think. And do we have the candidate forum that we normally have, or that board members and town council members, has that been scheduled yet? Usually, it's held at Hampden.
I haven't seen any of them.
So the one tomorrow is sponsored by Maine School Management. And so you'll have Betsy Webb, and I'll be making some like sort of general remarks. And then they'll be, we'll break up and go into small groups with our core legislative people from our areas. So for us, it might be a bigger catchment area now that we have Frankfort. I think we're going to get to meet some legislators that we haven't traditionally dealt with in the past, you know, that kind of thing. That's the forum for that one. John?
I actually have two different questions. I guess I'll take them one at a time. I don't see on the agenda any space for committee reports. But I have a report, which I didn't deliver last meeting, because the UTC board had not met. I'll make it very brief. UTC is getting along very well. They have the largest enrollment number in history, roughly 560 students. Their absolute maximum capacity is 600. And I think it's partly because of the growth of the bridge, the bridge here. And my second question has to do with the upcoming yearly Maine School Board Association Conference. I'm wondering whether we are recruiting any of our members to go to that. I'm asking because I have been elected by the UTC board as their official representative, but they're not giving me the money.
Okay. Yes, we always are recruiting our board members to go. So you'll be going, John?
Yes.
Great. Are there any other people that definitely know right now that they're going? Can I can write their names down? Kelly, Martha?
I'm trying.
Okay. Okay, and I'll email you to see if you want overnight accommodations. So please let me know if you do have a chance to go one day or both days, and I'll have a follow-up.
We'll also need from our contingency of voting delegate as well.
We'll be doing that the next board meeting, yes. Okay, great.
I have a quick question. On the slide about the alternative students, if I could just jump back to that, you talked about homeschool and virtual charter school and private school.
Yes.
How about students that are attending, like Daniel High School, or John Babs, from our, from our towns?
Like through a super intense agreement, you mean?
Well, not only that. I guess it would have to be that, right?
Yes.
If they have an intent?
Yes.
Do you know what that number would be?
I do. Okay, we have right now, through super intense agreements, we have six coming into our system, 15 going out, and all 15 going out are to Frankfort. Because what's happening is, if you have, let's say, a junior that was given the option to go through school the entire year, if they have a sibling, usually we try to allow that to occur.
They're running Belfast, you mean?
Yes, that's correct. Searstor, Belfast. We have none, right now, going to Bangor, Brewer, Herman, Nacomus, Old Town, Orno.
To clarify, the Frankfort piece is, that wasn't the reorganization plan?
Right.
That they had a choice for the last next three new years.
Right. Well, they had a choice, but my point, the sibling, sibling didn't have a choice, but logically, obviously, you're going to have the sibling, and the older student had the same high school. And most of these, probably out of the 15, I'm going to guess probably 13, have that condition. Other than that, that's it.
Okay, thanks.
I have one question.
Yes, yeah.
I know of a family who traditionally homeschooled in Frankfort. They're sending their children to Bangle Christian.
Okay.
How does that show up on honor?
That didn't show up. That didn't show up, Eric.
There's got to be more than just one. I mean, John Babs, Bangle Christian, there's got to be, there's got to be more than that of these four towns.
Yeah, on October 1, we'll have the 100% accurate report, because prior to that, schools aren't obligated to report it. So I'll give you another update on October 1. Okay. All right.
Old business, we have none. New business, discuss and act on school overnight field trips.
Yes, do you have the exhibit per board policy? I'm going to ask you to endorse this, but I'd like to have Mrs. Yaley and Mrs. King give an overview on the Indonesia trip that's coming up, that's planned to come up this June. So, Mrs. Yaley, you went, please?
I'm going to pretty much turn it over to Catherine, that this is an opportunity that a former, a graduate of ours brought to our attention, who lives there, and we thought it was a great opportunity for students who were interested. So Mrs. King can tell you what it's all about, and then we'll answer questions.
The former student that Mrs. Yaley is referring to is a young woman named Emmy Russell. She's a graduate of Hampden Academy. She's originally from Winterport. She, Emmy spent some.
She, Emmy spent some time in Udanda doing NGO educational work. She then came to, came back to Maine to direct the youth outdoor, you're welcome, youth outdoor leadership program for the YMCA in Bangor. And then went to work for the program that's named on the handout that I just gave you called the Odyssey Institute, which is headquartered in Bali, Indonesia. It's a, an international student travel organization, very similar to, not an exchange trip. It's not an exchange program like AFS. It's not like that. But it organizes and facilitates trips similar to the ones that Ben Johnson takes to roam Italy and Greece with his students annually or semi-annually with a couple of dozen students. So Emmy contacted me and said that she believed that travel to Pacific Islands, to Indonesia, would provide a unique and different cultural experience for our students than those that are valuable but are already sort of standard fare in Western Europe and Southwestern Europe for our students. So she is able to negotiate a special rate with the Odyssey Institute for our students. She is able to negotiate with the airlines a lower rate than I would be able to negotiate. And so what she's proposed is putting together a trip that would, her proposal is to go at the end of final exams this spring, would take the students by air, as I understand it, from Boston, probably to New York, to San Francisco, to Indonesia. Stay there for 10 to 14 days and then return roughly two weeks after school gets up. And I'm certainly open to answering any questions that I'm able to answer for you now.
This, there's a, a strong educational component that Catherine can choose. There's some options.
Right. The, there are two that are particularly consistent with the courses that I teach. One is, well, both actually are closely aligned with the Modern Global Perspectives course that I teach. One is a strand in environmental studies and sustainability, excuse me, I'm losing my voice. And the second is cultural immersion, which of course goes along with the global awareness component of modern global perspectives. The staff at Odyssey Institute all have advanced degrees in education. So student experiences are facilitated by trained, experienced educators. And to me, perhaps the most valuable educational part of this is the debriefing that they guarantee to the students. So it's not just that the students are immersed. It's not just that they engage in all of these things. There's a focused, structured debrief at the end to bring home and reinforce the learning experiences that the students are exposed to.
And how many students do you plan on taking or?
I'm happy, I'm happy to take up to two dozen. Right now, we have 16 who have indicated interest. I think Emerald's preference would be that I bring somewhere between 20 and 24. I'm not sure I can, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure I'll get 20 to 24. Right now, I'm 16. I'm not sure.
And what's the cost for the student?
I don't know. I, it's, it's consistent with the cost that students undertake when they go to France and Italy and Greece. Last year, we were talking around somewhere around $2,500 to $3,000. I don't know what's happened with the cost since then. I've emailed Emily, Emmy, a couple of times recently, as recently as yesterday, about two things. One is a question Mr. Lyons raised, and that's about insurance coverage through Odyssey Institute. Whether or not there's anything extra in addition to personal insurance coverage that each student would carry with him or her. I haven't heard back from her with an updated expense estimate or with an answer to the question about insurance. So I'm afraid I can't give you that information.
So the way the process works typically on these overseas trips is we get permission from Mr. Lyons to put out feelers to the students. And if we get some level of interest, we bring it to you folks. But we've not had a parent meeting or we, you know, we don't have write-ups yet. We only do that if you folks give us a, a green light. So, for example, I think on that list, there's the France-Spain trip.
Yes, there is.
You folks last year approved that. And we're, we then move forward with providing more information to students, having parent information nights, and getting a commitment and finding the, kind of the drop-dead date of when you could pull out and not lose them. So that would be the next step, if you folks agree for us to continue to pursue this.
The students are aware just fair information that signing the, signing the sheet that I put out outside of my room obliges them to nothing. It's simply an expression of their interest. They're aware of that. Their parents are aware of that.
What does the timeline lead us to, we'd need to get a visa passport?
I don't know. They, they do need a visa. The, the, last time I applied for a passport was last November when I went to Prince Edward Island to stay over the Thanksgiving holidays with a friend of mine. Mine was back and forth within a matter of a few weeks. Students are obviously available, obviously able if they need to get an expedited passport. I don't see that as an issue at all in any way, shape, or form, given that the trip at the earliest would leave June 14. I mean, it doesn't, the State Department's backlog, but they're not that backward.
Other questions?
I'm sure that there would be fundraising for this trip, but I think this would be a pretty substantial fundraising because I think we're talking about $35,000 to $40,000 for the entire group.
So each student, we provide opportunities for students to do fundraising. So let's use the France-Spain trip because they've done a variety. They, interestingly enough, probably the one where they earned the most money is they were out at the transfer station, emptying people's back trunks and, and people would tip them. And they really made out like bandits. They've had, there's a family who, one of the parents or both of the parents work at the Bucksport Mill. And the Bucksport Mill has agreed to let them have sort of bake sales and things on paydays. So they, and, and you only get to share in that if you participate. So some students choose not to participate in many opportunities. And others try to not only participate in the ones we set up, but they ask permission to do their own, which we typically say no to. To go out on their own, that's part of our board policy. Mrs. King has had a lot of experience in helping students fundraise because of her success as the mock trial coach. They went numerous times to the nationals. And while the board provided some level of support for that, because it was a, a competitive team from the high school, the majority of the fundraising was done under Mrs. King's supervision.
I will say also in response to that, Mr. Coggeshall, that I understand that the communities of Winterport and Bangor, of Winterport and Hampden and New Bird and now Frankfort are fundraising fatigue. I do understand that. There are repeated annual requests for money. And so I would, will make it entirely clear to the students that, to the extent that it's possible, they should plan on funding as much of these, as much of the expenses that this trip is going to impose on them themselves.
Well, I, yes, not because of fundraising fatigue, because I, I think there are a lot of people in our towns who can afford to toss in some more. But what I was implying is that perhaps fundraising should start now as opposed to later in the year or next year. We, we managed to raise a pretty substantial sum of money in approximately three weeks last year for kids who went to this national robotics competition. But we only had three weeks to raise it. And of course, that, that made it noticeably more difficult. But we, we have six or seven months now to raise this. And so I'm, I'm just saying that if you're going to do this, you should start thinking about raising the money now.
I have.
Other questions? If not, then I would ask for your endorsement of the exhibit as presented with the field trips for Hampton Academy, Wagner, Reeves Brook, and W L B is noted.
I move that we enthusiastically endorse this field trip.
Second?
Great. Other questions? Are there any more questions for really Mrs. King or about any of the other proposed here? Good. All those in favor? And that's unanimous.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And we have a warrant protocol.
Yes, I'm going to have Emil go over that. We did have a meeting with the finance committee on Friday, so.
I'm going to turn to our finance committee, you, Lance Elharche. And then any other questions come up, then we can answer them. P and I and Amy, please answer the questions.
So you can see in the agenda notes, the finance committee met on last Friday to review the unaudited fiscal year 2014 budget. And as a result, we're going to be in compliance with Title 20A, 14854. The following motion transfer of funds is what's needed. So we have funds in the facilities management cost center that we would like to move into the special education cost center, the systems admin cost center, and the CTE cost center. Currently, those three cost centers are in a zero balance or a minus balance. And we have a positive cash flow in the facilities management cost center. So to be in compliance with Title 20A, we have to bring those negative cost centers up to a positive. So what we'd like to do is move $145,000 from the facilities management cost center into those three other cost centers to bring them up into a positive.
So hold. Second?
The move in second is? And Emil, you have the language you need from that note?
I do.
Are there any questions about this transfer of funds?
I would like to make the board aware, Kelly, that Emil and I went over very thoroughly the campaign plans as to why that happened. So they've been briefed as to what was the cause and effect, so to speak.
Great. Are there any other questions on the board? All those in favor? I'll say yes.
Thank you.
All right, communication and correspondence.
I just, if we're not, I have a few things to report about the community. I think we picked a date to set. But I don't see that on the agenda anymore.
Our committee reports generally are on the second, like, we do committee report, I'm sorry, on the first meeting of the month. But if you'd like to give us a handout, we would be happy to take them. So that's why you don't see them on each agenda?
Got it.
It takes, it takes a while.
I'm just going to, I don't think there are enough of these to go around. But, and this is a little bit repetitive. This refers in part to the community forums for extending the school day. But also talks about providing updates for the proficiency-based education degree going forward. It's going to be talked about at those same events. So there are some dates there. And it's important to know that we are submitting, we talked about this last time, but we are in fact submitting the extension request that only the top most school systems are for the implementation of the proficiency-based education requirements. And then this last handout is just an update on our continuing progress on the teacher evaluation and developments that the administrative council has made for our consideration. We had a very good meeting about that today, and I think some great progress there. So we'll talk, I guess, more about that at the next meeting. For your reading pleasure.
Thank you.
So Kelly, we have, correct me if I'm wrong now, we have a standing ed committee meeting prior to each board meeting, right? We do. Okay. So ed committee will be on October 1.
Yep. Likely 5:30 depending on if that technology committee is ready to do their next presentation to us.
Great.
6 o'clock if not.
Okay. Jamie, do you need a policy committee?
Me too.
And we've tentatively scheduled the board retreat for October 1 and 2, right?
Thank you. That's correct.
It's going to be before the board retreat?
Yes.
On the 1st?
Oh, you mean right before the 1st? Yeah, we can do that.
So 5:30 for ed committee, 5:30 for policy committee? 6?
We can do that.
So 5:30 ed committee, 6 o'clock policy committee on the 1st. And the next evening, the board retreat on the 2nd starting at 7. We should be all set. And your Maine School of Management is 23 and 24?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is that it for meetings? Athletic, we may all sit there?
We'll be meeting on the 15th, but we're, that needs to be set up through also Mr. Winchester. So that's ten and ten.
Okay.
15 to 10?
15 off of Chester.
Okay.
I have that up to 10.
Yes.
All right. So I need a motion, please, to enter executive session to discuss a personnel matter. Someone read it from our board notes.
And we enter executive session to discuss a personnel matter according to 1 MRSA 4056A.
Second?
The move in second is to enter executive session. All those in favor?